I'll give reference to the. Okay, please bow your head for prayer. Dear Father, thank you for this day and the blessing you've given us. Thank you for our opportunity to do the business of the people of Montgomery. Work with us as we go through this agenda today and give us guidance. These things we ask in our name. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, on the God, indivisible, and with its all.
Counselor, motion on the work session minutes from March sixteenth.
Move to adopt.
Have most adopted, if I raise your hand.
Five with one abstention.
Motion on the regular council meetings on March sixteenth.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have most adopted, if I raise your hand.
Unanimous.
I need a motion on the March twentieth.
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth, I'm sorry, correct me.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Have most adopted, if I raise your hand.
Five with one abstention.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening, how's everybody doing? Hope everyone had a great Passover, great Easter. Since we last met, we've got a couple of items to discuss. I'll try to get right to it. I'm going to start, if we will, with the finance, financial summary. Because we did not get that in the last meeting. If we can go from there. Today I have four slides that are going to show you a little bit of the revenue trends as we see them here in the city of Montgomery. Sales and use tax revenue is still reflecting positive growth year over year. Revenue from sales and use tax increased for the month of March twelfth, I'm sorry, for the month of March, twelve percent above the same period in fiscal year 2020. That shows again, I think, a little bit of the bounce back that we have. Although we're still in a pandemic, you can see on the screen that the revenue stream has had a positive growth every month in the current year with the exception of December. Again, as I mentioned previously, the six percent negative growth rate was an anomaly due to the slower than usual delivery of mail. The sales and use tax revenue that didn't arrive until January is definitely reflected any double-digit growth rate of more than seventeen percent. So the overall sales and use tax revenue is up almost eight percent year over year. That's very good, I think, for what we're going to be seeing in the second quarter. The increased growth in sales and use tax revenue is an indicator that citizens are still spending more at their local grocery markets, athletic venues, and home improvement stores. Those are the sectors where most of the growth has occurred. Some of the retail clothing stores have also experienced positive growth during recent months. Now that vaccines are available and citizens are getting inoculated, I am certainly hopeful that our citizens will be able to get out more and we'll see more of robust tourism as well as in our economy. We believe this will improve the overall economic landscape and the revenue will come back to the budget level as it was prior to the arrival of COVID-19. Next slide, please. Lodging tax revenue is still indicative of a lack of tourism in the city. This tax for fiscal year 2021 compared to the previous year has a negative growth rate of nearly thirty-eight percent. Lodging tax revenue, we believe, will rebound once tourism increases and the pandemic has significantly been mitigated. We are hopeful that a couple of developers that have projects that are supposed to start this summer will still initiate those. Those projects are important, again, to our ability to add rooms and to be able to host various events and tournaments that I think all of us would like to get back to. We're also looking at trying to bring in additional investors into some spaces that have not been previously maximized because we believe that the demand will call for it. And as we've seen recently, if you look over at Carrefour Road and a couple of exits up in Prattville, we've seen some new hotels go up there. And we believe that our I-65 corridor is just as attractive, if not more so, for those investments. So we're going to be pursuing those as well. Next slide. Very quickly, the gasoline tax revenue had a positive growth rate in March of more than three percent over the previous year. Year-over-year gasoline tax revenue has a negative growth rate of more than five percent. Final slide, if you will. The alcoholic beverage tax revenue had a significant positive growth rate of seventeen percent in March compared to the previous year. You know, part of this is due to that people are staying home, but they're still gathering in small groups or they're buying, you know, various spirits and things along those lines, even though they may not be going out as much socially. So we are seeing that also. Overall, year-over-year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue still has a positive growth rate of nearly six percent. Just to give you a little bit additional information on revenue collections. Revenue from Avalon Tax is ninety-five percent complete compared to budgeted revenue. Only seventy-two percent of Avalon Tax revenue was collected during the same period in the previous year. The number of business licenses issued as of March thirty-first was one point five percent less than fiscal year 2020. However, the total dollar amount of licenses issued has increased revenue from business licenses more than four percent compared to the previous year. So the end-of-year projections will be available to the next council meeting on April the twentieth. And these are things we just kind of wanted you to have a heads-up about. We're going to get to, I think, one of the more, that's going to conclude the finance report. We're going to get to the issue regarding the masks and kind of where the community stands, things relates to COVID-19. Do we have any slides we can share there? One of the things that we did at the start of this was to try to, you know, let the data and the science guide us on, you know, what our decisions were as a community. What we tried to do was to really look not just at how people felt, but really what we were getting from our medical experts here locally and what we were getting even beyond. And they've been great partners in this all the way through, and they continue to be great partners. Whether it's been with our EMA led by Christina Thornton, our police, Chief Ernest Finley, our fire department, Chief Miffler Jordan. All of them have been outstanding partners in this, along with our friends over at the county as well, in trying to help us every way that we can through this process. I think that we are certainly seeing some positive signs right now, but we're also seeing some negative signs. We've had a recent spike in cases, and we're also being told of different variants that we're seeing in this community. So we're still cautious about this, and we're still trying to approach it with that. We know that the governor's safer-at-home order will expire on the ninth. And one of the things that we've been trying to do is to, again, hear what the CDC is suggesting at the federal level, factor that into where we are locally and how we move forward. And we believe that that is the best approach to this, is not to really take our own opinions or our own position on this, but really look at the medical experts and those that are closer to this than us and really follow their advice. And so we've been doing that as well. And so what we found is that not only is the president and the CDC-recommended communities keep masking policies in place for thirty days, but they're also, you know, recommending that we continue to remind people that we're still in this pandemic. There is some belief that, you know, we can move forward, but until, for me, I see, you know, a high number of adults being vaccinated as well as young people, I have my concerns in order of what that may bring about. And so what I would like to propose to the council tonight is that on effective April ninth at 5:00 PM, when the governor's mandate, the governor's safer-at-home order expires, we want to require, and I would like for you to be supportive of us, requiring face masks to be worn in public places within the city to continue slowing the spread of COVID-19. I'd like for this order to be effective for thirty days, at which time we can reevaluate our community's risk, vaccination rate, and impact on others. I believe we owe it to ourselves and our families and our communities to take this small step for their health and safety and progress until we can increase our vaccination rate. Many of us have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, but many have not. And so we're still trying to get those numbers up, and we're still trying to share that information along with our healthcare partners. So I want to continue to be vigilant where this is concerned and just remind people, what we wanted to do is to exit all of this safely. We didn't get in overnight, we're not going to get out of it overnight, and the worst thing I believe we can do is to rush the finish of this. And I know that's what we have a tendency to do because we want to get to a better place and a more normal habit of doing things like we were. But I don't think that we're there yet, and if you look at our numbers in the area, certainly here in Montgomery, we're not. Certainly, as hospitalization rates have come down, it's better, but we're still seeing the numbers of COVID-19 cases increase month over month. We want to make sure that we do our part in that. But I want to thank the business community, I certainly want to thank the community members for all of your cooperation, for everything that you've done where this is concerned. And I believe that as a community, if we move forward where this is concerned, that we'll be in a better place a lot quicker than we would be otherwise. And so I, like everyone else, am ready to move beyond masks and move beyond other ordinances, but we're not there yet. And in coordination with COVID-19 Task Force, other medical experts here in this area, as well as Centers for Disease Control, I recommend this council continue our ordinance for another thirty days, at which time we can come back and evaluate all the data that we have been and determine how we move forward. With that said, that will conclude my remarks for the evening. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Clerk, first item.
Mr. President, item one, resolution revoking the business license of Signature Events Center at 5050 Narrow Lane Road.
We have two people here, Representative of Signature Club, please.
Yes, sir. Since our last meeting here with city council, we haven't had any significant events or issues from this business. And at this time, we're just going to continue to monitor. We don't have any objection for them to keep their license at this time.
So you recommend this stay open?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good then. All right, sir, that's your name for the record so we'll know that you were here.
Eddie Johnson.
Okay, Ms. Young. Unless the police department decides to call you back, you're clear for now. Okay, thank you. Have number two.
And this is just going to die for a lack of motion, so it would have to come back.
Huh?
I said this will die for lack of motion.
Right.
So they would have to re-present it.
Right, right.
Item two, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Family Dollar Store, 2423 Eastern Boulevard.
Is a representative of Family Dollar here? Lord, how do we call him? Family Dollar, are you in the house?
Are they on the phone?
They're not here.
Is there anyone on the phone representing Family Dollar Store?
No.
Okay, it dies.
Okay.
It's not passed.
Dies for lack of motion.
Yep.
Item three, hearing on proposed ordinance, amending ordinance rezoning one lot located at 10350 Highway eighty east from a flood hazard district to an M1 district.
Mr. Tyson?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended unanimously the rezoning of this property.
This is a public hearing, anyone who would like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Seeing none, if any public hearings been held, it's possible for the council, any motion?
Mr. President, move for approval.
Have motion approved, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item four, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning one lot located at 400 Mobile Street from a T40 to a T5 Smart Cove zoning district.
Tommy?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property for the purpose of an event center, and it was a unanimous recommendation.
Okay. This is a public hearing, if anyone likes to speak against this item, come forward or call in on the phone.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Mr. Tyson, are they already having events here?
I'm sorry?
Are they already having events here?
I do not, I do not know.
No?
I do not know.
Oh, you don't know, okay.
I tell you, a public hearing's been held, it's possible for the council, any motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Have motion approved, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item five, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning 3.59 acres located on the south side of Tred Road, approximately sixteen hundred feet east of Russell Lane, from an R-50 district to an R-99S district.
Mr. Tyson?
Mr. President, the planning commission recommended the rezoning of this property so that it will accommodate one mobile home.
This is a public hearing, anyone who would like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing's been held, it's possible for the council, any motion?
Mr. President, move for approval.
Have motion approved, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item six, ordinance amending Chapter Three alcoholic beverages by adding Section 3.7, compliance with local alcoholic beverage control laws.
You have an ordinance in front of you asking for a fee for, it's a filing fee and investigation fee on liquor alcohol applications.
Okay.
Motion to suspend rules?
Have motion to suspend rules, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item seven, resolution setting the dates for the District One special election.
Any motion to suspend rules on this?
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item eight, show cause hearing on the resolution revoking the business license of American Pallet at 1545 Furnace Street.
Ms. Stokes? You want to show us the pictures now?
Sir, I'll give Mike, put it up.
There you go, there's a picture.
So on March third, we conducted inspection out there. Had an obstructed fire access road, which is violation of international fire code. So you see, it's April fourth, he has actually cleaned that road up, got the pallets off the lot line next to your tractor trailers on your right. So he has actually done that and made progress on that. However, as you can still see, there's still a lot of pallets out there, a lot of violations still remain that he's got to complete. Just a few. He's got storage exceeds twenty feet in height. You know, he's got to have, got to have access in between the pallets. He's got to have fire extinguishers, got to have address on the building. Witchips and everything are still piled way too high and not of, you know, of height. So there's still a host of violations still to go.
Better than it was.
But, I mean, yeah, he's making progress, but I still need some other, all these other violations cleared up. As clear as it.
Do you come back to see us in about a month?
Yes, sir, if that's your decision on a month.
What's your decision?
I would say two weeks. I mean, I need to clean, I mean, a month for me would be, you know, if we have a fire out there prior to then, you know, it's, this is what we're dealing with. So we need it.
It's been right, and I don't know whose district it's in, but.
It's in District Three.
It's in Three. I just recommend we do exactly what the fire department wants.
I think that's exactly right.
You put them on the agenda every time until they're satisfied.
Come back in two weeks and we'll see how you're doing at that time.
Mr. President, do you, let me, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Stokes, and that's right, Mr. Stokes. Do you think you can make a good effort in two weeks and have Fire Department to come back out?
Yes, I could make some effort, but it's going to take a long time to sit in there like that, they haven't been out in two years.
Like to move.
Okay, so.
It's going to take longer. If I come two weeks and had to come another two weeks, I will not be able to get it in there like that, that's what I'm saying.
So what we're trying to say, we want you to continue the process, to keep your license, continue to work to get in code with what he's saying on these violations. We don't want to revoke your license, but we want to continue, so we feel that we put it out sixty days, you wait two weeks before. So just continue to do what you're doing to clean up this property, get them up on all these violations. And all the thing we're doing is reviewing, if they could come back and show where you're making progress, we continue to do what we do.
Right, okay, sound good? Thank you, thank you.
We do that in two weeks, right?
Two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Item ten, resolution approving the issuance of a business license to Escape Tapas Grill, 109 Eastern Boulevard.
Okay. Yes, sir, you're here to represent?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Your name for the record, sir?
Sir?
Your name for the record?
My name is Preston Presley, I'm an attorney for Escape.
Okay.
This is Mr. Frank Walker, owner and operator of Escape.
We understand you want to get your license back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, it's my understanding that all obligations have been paid, so I have no issues with it at this time.
I need a motion to suspend rules?
Before we make the motion, let me just say, Mr. Walker, I'm so glad to see you. I was worried about that, we didn't see you, we saw you representing, but I'm so glad to see you here today. We appreciate that, so, motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
I need a motion to adopt.
You're going to adopt it, Mr.? Go ahead, move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Item eleven, application for lounge retail liquor Class Two package license, doing business at Z Liquor at 10247 Chantilly Parkway.
Representative Z Liquors, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
Koushik Kumar Patel.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone who would like to speak against this item, please call in or come forward this time. Seeing none, if any public hearings been held, it's possible for the council.
Mr. President, move to suspend rules?
Have most suspended rules, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Item twelve, application for lounge retail liquor Class Two package license, doing business at Troy Market at 4111 Troy Highway.
Okay, we have several, your name for the record?
Koki Shainidhulam.
Okay, and you're with him, please?
I'm Monica Mann, I'm his attorney, I'm here for the language barrier to assist.
Okay, very good.
I didn't get her name, please, sir.
Your name, please, again?
Me?
Yeah.
Monica Mann.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone who would like to speak against this item, please come forward this time. We've got two. Number twelve, who I got? That's who signed up. Yeah, number twelve, okay, there you are, okay.
Eric Tate.
Your name?
Eric Tate.
Okay, and you're against this item?
Pass these out.
Are these the petitions you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Give those to clerk, please, you can't hand those to clerk.
Thank you.
These are all people opposed to this liquor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what I need to know. Mr. Mitchell, you got it? Okay, anybody else speak against this item? You're against it too, sir, come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
James Reed.
Okay, James.
To the mayor, the chief, the president, and all the members of the council. I'm the president of the Greater Bell Road Neighborhood Association, and I'm also a part of the District Six Neighborhood Presidents.
Okay.
And we, this location is 4411 Troy Highway. That's on the corner of Park Town Way and Troy Highway. And it's across the street from Virginia Loop. And right next to the place, less than a block, is an apartment complex. This is not the right business for this area. Listen, we're not against business. Hey, if you got a business, make all the money you want, but for this business at this location, we are totally against it, absolutely totally against it. I mean, earlier today, we saw that the police have a lot of stuff they've got to do. Well, to open this liquor store would be like pouring gasoline on some more duties and some more calls that they're going to have to make. Councilman Mitchell was gracious enough to set up a conference call with the gentleman and with the presidents of the Association of District Six. We had about nine, ten presidents on the line, plus some citizens on the line, to express our concerns. What was disheartening and what was disturbing is the person who's going to open it, who wants to open the place, never even got on the line. You know, it was as if no courtesy, no respect, anything to listen to our concerns, and we have concerns about it. And so our perception of that, of his action was, the heck with y'all, I don't care about y'all, I'm going to open it whether you like it or not. That was how we perceived his inaction to even come on the line and listen to us. And so what we're begging you, you know, this body to do, is don't allow this to happen. Please do not ignore the citizens and our concerns like this gentleman did. We're against it, totally against it, make no misunderstanding about that. I thought I was going to be the only one up here against it, but I appreciate the other, the other people who took the time out to come down here to speak their mind. And so I appreciate the time, I appreciate everybody for letting us, for letting me come down and speak on behalf of District Six and the presidents and the citizens for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak against the item? Now the owner, please, attorney.
I am going to speak on Mr. Islam's behalf because he does have a language barrier, which was the reason he was not on the phone. No disrespect, he meant no disrespect. My partner, who is also an attorney, Mr. Courtney, since I was not available, and we only found out about the phone conference the afternoon before, was on the phone to represent Mr. Islam because he does not understand well on the phone, and he does not speak well, people do not understand it. There was no disrespect meant. As far as the location of the store, it's a single unit, it's not in a strip mall, so there's no other patrons or businesses that would have to worry about the incoming traffic. It's on a local highway, there's no street traffic or children that are walking back and forth to school. I do understand that there's an apartment complex, but there's no rule that he can't have a liquor store or a package store near an apartment complex. He also owns a package store on West Ferry Road, the Stop and Shop, he's run it for two years. There's never been a single nuisance or disturbance in the area, the police have never had to be called. It's very well established and respected in the community on West Ferry Road, I think it's on the corner of West Ferry and Burbank, and so we just ask that you reconsider.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mitchell?
Let me tell you this about my residence, I don't like to see empty buildings, but at the same token, I listen to the people that stays in that area. I have a petition, I have several people to reach out to call me, so tonight I will. So tonight I will be making a motion to deny.
Okay. And the public hearing's been held. It's possible for the council, Mr. Mitchell. Go ahead.
Motion to deny?
You guys to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to deny?
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is denied. Item 13, resolution appointing Ladee Douda to the Montgomery Clean City Commission.
Mr. President, can you motion? Motion to suspend the rules on 13? Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. 14, resolution appointing Ernestine Woods to the Montgomery Clean City Commission.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules?
On the remainder of the agenda? Okay. Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Any motion to adopt? Honorable, raise your hand. 13?
Unanimous. Item 15, resolution reappointing Cindy Yarborough to the Montgomery Clean City Commission.
Move to adopt. Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 16 has been withdrawn. Item 17, William Slater, review of demolition of unsafe structure at 865 Mill Street.
Mr. Slater, you're here today? Brandon? Brandon, we asked Mr. Slater to do some things. What's happened?
Well, Mr. Slater was appealing was the cost of the demolition. The demolition has already taken place at 865 Mill Street. At the last council, we were asking for approval to file the lien to recoup the expenditures. And that's what Mr. Slater came forward appealing.
Brandon Slater?
Okay, how everybody doing? No, actually, I mean, my reason for coming here is because I feel like I should be compensated for my property that was destroyed.
That would be a legal situation. He'd have to file a claim against the city, and that would be in the legal department. Okay?
No, sir. He files it with me.
I also have another...
He files it with me.
He filed with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. You'll file that claim with Ms. Baylock, City Court, right there.
I also have another issue that I want to bring up, Mr. Mayor. I noticed at the last meeting, you were saying that you had $50 million that you wanted to donate to invest into community development.
Mr. President?
Well...
Mr. President, that's not the issue before us.
Huh?
We're talking about the demolition.
Yeah, we're talking about, that doesn't have anything to do with it. You're on your, that's not on, you're not on the agenda for that item. Okay? You're on the agenda for that demolition. That's it.
What I'm asking for is that my property be replaced. The way that you can compensate me is that the city was to give me, replace my property with another building.
Okay, well, we want you to do...
Which I want to use as a free breakfast program for the residents in District 4.
We want you to file a claim for that, okay?
My name is William Slater. I live at 1114 Beaufort Street, Montgomery, Alabama, 36107. My phone number is 334-621-0369. If you are interested in helping the people in District 4, please get in contact with me.
Thank you very much.
Since I can't get in contact with none of y'all.
Thank you. Okay.
Please get in contact with me and I hope to see everyone again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Okay.
My number is available. Do you need my number? I have a card right here, Mr. Slater. You can get in contact with me?
Number 18?
Resolution designating nuisance abatement agents.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve. Motion to approve.
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 19, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of the unsafe structures listed at the following, those listed locations.
Move to hold. Move to uphold.
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 20, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various lots.
Motion approved.
Motion to adopt.
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. 21, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Move to adopt.
Honorable, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. The mayor...
Oh, someone wanted to speak on something. We was getting ready to...
What?
Well, we still have the mayor's ordinance.
Oh, but I think you wanted to talk about the structures.
On number 20?
On what?
On 21?
On 21?
Come on up to the...
I don't have anybody that signed up for 21.
Oh, she didn't sign up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here concerning a city employee and a neighborhood association that is, that has been harassing me. And the city employee is using his position to help them harass me. And they're not a legal harmers association. And they have sent me this letter saying that for today at the city council meeting that they will be authorizing the city of Montgomery to abate a nuisance when I don't have a nuisance. And I have all of these photos.
Do you own, do you own that piece of property?
What number? Or you own this number 20?
21.
21?
That's the thick one.
We don't have it.
Paper copy. It's online. It's on my...
Oh, it's online.
What's the property address? What street is it on?
It's 532 Deerfield Drive.
532 Deerfield Drive?
We don't have that particular deal.
It's online. It's online.
What's the address again?
532 Deerfield.
Brandon, what's the story on this?
I believe Ms. Madison may be referring to, I believe, Mr. Pertle responded to a nuisance complaint and sent a notification, I think it was regarding the grounds and maybe an issue with a privacy fence or a fallen privacy fence. And I apologize, I didn't have much on it until right at the end of the tape.
Okay. My privacy fence, when the storm came last year, it blew a door off. So what I did, I just leaned the door on its side because my neighbors had been harassing me so much. I just wanted my yard to be private. And they've called Mr. Pertle so much and they've called the police on me so much that, you know, I just don't even want to live at home anymore. And it's gotten ridiculous. These people have been sending me harassing letters in the mail. They have remained unanimous, but they've been using Mr. Pertle to further harass me about the smallest things. I have photos of other neighbors' yards whose grass is taller than mine, and they just continue to harass. It's every week, it's every week, it's every week, it's something with these people.
And this, your neighbors?
And they're constantly caught.
Your neighbors?
Ma'am, sir?
Yes, this is your neighbors you're talking about?
Yes, they're calling him to declare nuisances when it's nothing there. I had two planks to lean to the side on my fence. And they're telling me to replace the whole fence when I have a tree that's leaning over my house and leaning over my driveway that needs to be cut because when I consulted somebody about it, they told me, "Don't worry about replacing the fence. Cut the tree first because if they cut the tree and have to remove my new fence, it'll just like, it'll just like I'm paying for two fences." You see what I'm saying? So I just followed the gentleman's order. And I had been making plans to cut the tree so I could replace my fence. But these people are not giving me any type of time.
Who's not giving you the time?
My neighbors. And then they're constantly calling Mr. Pertle.
The law is with here and not with your neighbors, so we need to make sure what...
No, what I'm saying is they're constantly calling Mr. Pertle to make this, you know, to come out like it's something wrong and it's not anything wrong.
I have a question, Mr. President. Can we do, look at this? How many, I want to know how many 311 calls we've had on this property? Are they calling him directly or is it going up the chain of command through the 311? I just like to know.
I believe for sure there was two instances. One was regarding parking in the grass in the front yard off the driveway. And this second one that she's referring to is a nuisance complaint.
So she only had two 311 calls? How many times you said he's been out to your house?
Um, maybe about 10.
Now, I do know, prior to issuing that parking in the front yard ticket, Mr. Pertle received some complaints but offered verbal warnings on a number of inspections. When he went by there, spoke with her a couple of times and just tried to educate her to the ordinance and, you know, regarding the parking, that the vehicles all must be parked in the driveway and not in the, in the grass.
So when I removed my car, I have four cars at home. I have two on my driveway and two outside of the street. And if it was bad weather, when I get off at 12:30 at night, I try to get as close to the house as I can. So when I stopped parking on the grass, I started parking in front of my, by my mailbox. And I started calling the cops about a parking violation when there's no parking violation if I'm parking on the street and I'm not blocking anything.
I just, I think, I don't know what we, can we carry this over or not? Abate her today and we looking to this?
We can absolutely put her individual property on hold, but it'd be tied in with the entire nuisance resolution, which is 320 properties this evening.
I need her name for the record.
Which absolutely, like I said, I believe from the, like I said, I just kind of came into it late today. But like I said, I don't know that most of our complaints that filtered us through 311 are going to come in anonymously. But I do know Mr. Pertle, it goes above and beyond if he's getting complaints regarding a certain issue to work with property owners. And like I said, before every issue in the single, he's only issued her one ticket. And I believe she may still be parking there and is still continuing trying to work with the parking.
Well, he says that I have junk litter, trash, building material, and debris in my yard, and I don't have anything in my yard.
Yeah, and from my understanding, that was related to the fallen fence.
The fallen fence isn't in my yard, though.
Excuse, is it on the property itself or is it been removed?
It's on the property. I had two planks to simply just lean to the side on my fence. And I took them off and I end up getting this notice. And I just think that you guys need to look at this information because I don't have any of this stuff in my yard. And I just think that it's going too far at this point. And somebody needs to do something about it because I'm not going to stand here and let somebody treat me like this. Yeah, it's on the, it's on the corner lot. No, I don't have blue doors. My doors are brown.
Mr. President?
And I have a neighbor across the street. Her fence is, is broken. It's still attached.
Don't worry about the neighbor right now.
It's broken, just like mine is, and nobody said anything to her.
Brandon, don't when we give out, don't when we give out a violation, isn't it recorded?
You mean as far as the...
Pictures, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Can we?
And unfortunately, I don't have any with you, but I can definitely get those. Yes, sir.
But can we get it at the next meeting? And I'd like to see, and I'd also like to know how many 311 calls we had on this? Just to know if it's coming up the right way or are they calling him personally on her? I just, I would like to know that.
Which, and I would state that if he does receive a verbal complaint, it is considered valid. If he happens to be in a neighborhood or if he sees an issue proactively to address, then he is to do both as well.
Yeah, but with just with this one, it just seems like she feels that he is, you know, he knows somebody or somebody know him and they just ringing him up, ringing him up. So, you know, I just kind of want to see what, you know, what that look like. And it's okay for them to call him, but maybe we might need him with this property, send it up 311. Let's get a full record on it, that type thing, so that we can have a full record on what's really going on. But I'd like to see that if we can at the next meeting if that's...
We'll have it. Yes, ma'am.
I need her name for the record.
What's your name again, Forrest?
My name is Concertica Madison.
I didn't understand you.
Concertica Madison.
You'll spell it for me?
I got her name on here. I can get this to you with her name on it.
Okay, thank you. Do you need that back?
Do you need this back?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Can we, can you wait around, let us make copies and give it back to you? Is that okay, Ms. Baylock?
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on that item? Item number 22?
Actually, we've got the mayor's ordinance that he introduced.
Huh?
We've got the mayor's ordinance that he introduced at the beginning. I've laid it on your desk.
That's going to be carried over?
You want to carry it over?
It's going to be carried over during that route.
Okay, Mayor, you had a resolution about renaming, getting the council's endorsement? Did you want that one or are you going to delay that one?
We want to delay that one.
Yeah.
But the mask, the mask, got to keep in mind that we like to do...
Like we talked about yesterday, we don't have the real, can't get, I can't get the roof suspended, okay? No suspension of the roof. So it's carried over.
Okay.
Which one we carrying over?
Carrying over, the mask is being carried over. The other one's not even been suspended in it.
Yeah, he's not introducing the other one, the resolution that I laid there.
Not being done at all.
He's pulled that one.
Yeah, pull that one.
Mr. President, why we carrying over the mask ordinance? I just want to understand. I just...
I have several members that did not want it and not ready to vote on it. Okay?
We have no discussion. When did y'all discuss it? How did, when did we discuss?
Now we got three.
Y'all discussed this at 3?
Huh?
Y'all discussed this at 3? Because I asked you about it and you said we're going to talk about it when we get here. And so I didn't discuss it.
Well, we did. I had several members that said they didn't want to vote on it. And tonight it was being carried over. And so I don't have the votes to get the suspension of the roof.
Who is it that's saying that?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to talk to you.
I mean, I want, I want to know, Mr. President, we sitting here together and this is for the city of Montgomery. I want to know who said it. I just feel like there's no need to hide it. If you don't want it, say it. Don't hide behind it. I mean, who is it? Clay, is it you? I mean, do y'all...
Brandon just left and he's out of here. He was one of them.
Who?
The lines was gone. Okay. He was, he asked me not to carry it over.
Mr. President, well, before he gets out of the parking lot, why don't, we got to keep in mind now that the governor's order is over on the 9th.
I understand that. I understand that, Mayor. I understand it totally.
So what we going to do between the 9th and the, and the next week?
I understand that, Mayor.
We talked, let me say this. We talked about the sunshine rule just two weeks ago. So I'm a part of this council. If there was a meeting had and I wasn't there, but you bring it here and without any discussion, it seem like somebody having meetings without everybody being in attendance, that's worse. That's not good. I didn't have, I asked you to talk about this when we was in work session. You said, "No, we'll talk about it at council." Now you just saying we carrying it over with no discussion? That's not appropriate, Jim Wright. That's not appropriate to do that.
Mr. President, I don't, Mr. Graham, I don't think anybody, I didn't have any conversation.
Somebody had a conversation. He just said, council member said.
Okay.
I'm just saying now.
One of, one of the issues is we just got the resolution before the meeting, okay?
Well, let's discuss that then.
Okay.
Well, let's discuss it.
Okay, let's discuss it.
Let's call for suspension of the roof.
All right, let's hold this item for the moment till I finish up with the rest of the agenda, then we'll come back to it, okay? On number 22, Scott, you got five minutes, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Council President and council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Scott Morrow, M-O-R-R-O. We were here earlier to discuss item 22.